At slightly after seven o'clock, so call this, uh, special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order.
Alderman Angel, Alderman Warman.
Here.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Magley.
Here.
Alderman Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilkins.
Alright, we have a forum this evening, official business can't take place. Do you want me to pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, uh, comments from citizens? Yes, ma'am? Yes.
My name is Evelyn Robertson. I live at 221 Sunset Lane. And I came out to meet my new council lady, and I've already got to meet her.
Alright.
With her husband, and that was nice. Got a one-on-one there.
Alright.
And I also wanted to make a couple of comments and ask a couple of questions.
Okay.
So, do I have any minutes? Go ahead. I don't wish to.
That's fine. I'm not sure if the mic is actually.
I don't believe the microphone.
Is it on? Is it on there?
No.
Okay.
It's on now.
Yep.
Okay, I'll just speak a little louder, is that it?
Okay, that's fine.
Well, um, I know that, um, our new council lady lives where there's not very many trees. She lives out in the open. I live where there's a lot of trees. And two blocks of Sunset Lane has fifty-nine trees. And I love the shade, I'm not complaining. But in the fall, though, leaves fall, and they clog up the water drainage. And I would like the city to, uh, have the property owners be more, um, aware of this. And take care of their own leaves and not let the water drainage just clog up. And, uh, other there too. And I just wondered, what about the street sweeper for the, around town? How many times did it get used and when was it used?
It goes, it goes to streets with curb and gutters probably about once a week when the weather's appropriate. For all the other streets, probably they don't get done more than once a year.
Right, what street gets done every week?
Those with curbs and gutters.
Around the square?
Well, wherever.
Okay. Um, then, the other thing I wanted to talk about was, I don't believe the microphone's on, is it?
Big said that.
Huh?
He just said that.
Um, in the newsletter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I read it. I don't know how many other people read it. I don't know how many smokers read it. But there's a little article in there about requests to the smokers to be more concerned and, um, take more care of their cigarettes and put them in the right places, in the trash. So, uptown, I notice around the stores, people aren't being very careful about where they put their cigarette bets. They want to go in the store after they get out of their car. What do they do? They just put it out right in front of the store. So, I would like for the city to, uh, take more, put more awareness out there with some signs about the litter and the tobacco. I noticed a frown, but anyway, I think more signs could be, uh, effective for the people. They're not reading this letter.
And you think they would read the signs more than the letter?
If they're putting in the right places. And if not, then, uh, litter is litter. Litter is bad, so there should be some consequences?
Yeah.
Are you saying to put the signs on private property?
Pardon?
Are you saying to put the signs on private property in front of, like, right by the, in the front of the stores, which is private property, that would, we would?
No, not without their permission.
That would need their permission?
Oh, of course. And then the city park, is that up to the park board?
It is, and they have signs several places.
Huh?
It is their responsibility, and they have signs up in all the areas where there are bleachers and stuff like that.
In the park? In the city square?
Not in the city square.
Okay, what about the city square? That's been abused very much lately, especially at Aquaphest and, uh, the patients that we have big, a lot of people.
I know, uh, where I work and all over in the military, they teach the soldiers to field strip their cigarettes, which means they take the little cherry off the end of it, they put the blood in their pocket. And, uh, you know, unfortunately, we don't have the same resources in city government as we do in the military. But, uh, I would like to see that.
Well, I'd like for you to pick it out and see what can be done to improve that.
I, I think just, you know, getting the word out, you know, people clean up after yourself, you know.
Some do.
Some do, but you got that, uh, you know, few that just kind of disregard.
Right.
You know.
Always? Okay.
The city square also is a park. It will come under the purview of the park board.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
Uh, please say that again.
The city square is a park. It comes under the purview of the park board.
That's what I wondered.
And then I will tell the park board president.
The park board takes care of the city square?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Okay. Then when does the park board meet?
Uh, it's been somewhat irregular lately. Usually, it's noon on the third Tuesday of the month.
My team takes care of the president?
Yes. They've already met for this month because they had to get some business.
Okay. Well, I think that, well, I live in the town, that's why I care. I live here and I, I shop here.
Right.
And we want people to shop here. And I do too, and that's why I am bringing this to your attention. And, um, then, also, I, I have one last, um, comment. Um, I noticed, I read in the paper last week's, um, council report. And I know, um, Landon Magley asked a question. And, um, I would like it to be more clarified that I couldn't understand the question, and I don't know whether you could, but I would, I would like to have it more clarified, David, if you could make it more understandable, um, your answer about.
About what?
You want to ask it again?
I don't remember. Yeah. I don't remember what it was.
Do you remember? Can you refresh, I remember?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
It was about the building that you're, you're supposed to be hitting something down.
And what we discussed. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. No, I just, but saying that I want an answer to your question, I don't even know what the question is.
His question was, what have you all done about?
I asked, I asked.
Oh, no, no, I, I agree. I'm just saying, that's why I was like, I don't know what you're referring to. Though what we discussed was, the three of us would go back through the building again, but we're also going to wait until it warmed up a little bit.
Wait, your what?
Until it warmed up a little bit, because we're going to go through the building again physically.
You're going to go through that building?
We've done it before. And so part of what we're engaging is, is he making progress? You know, e- each time we go through there, we have, you know, we want to know specifically, are you getting progress towards those items that would make your building fall out of, you know, ordinance?
Then if you go through it and in there, you can see if he's making progress, right?
That's exactly why we do that.
Right.
Yeah, we, we put on different clothes and we go.
But you said you could talk to him, and the other alderman would take care of something else. That was your statement in the paper.
I told him, yeah.
That you had gone and visited him.
I called, I talked to him on the phone, and I, what I did is I warned him that here pretty soon the three of us are going to do the same inspection we did before.
Okay, I just think it's a serious problem that it's getting, uh, let go and, uh, that's not doing.
Well, we're not letting it go. It's just with the weather and our schedules, it's.
The building is about to fall down.
I know. I just.
Thank you, thank you.
I do know that. So, thank you, thank you. Alright, any more comments from citizens?
I have something.
Okay.
I was approached this weekend by a couple of constituents, particularly after the very nice article in The Guard about the fine arts and the students that have gone on to be qualified to, you know, compete in state. And they wanted to know why the city doesn't have a proclamation issued commending the fine art students.
Well, no one has asked me for that yet.
Okay, on behalf of the people that asked me, I'm asking, can we have that done?
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
No problem.
That'll be my last official act. I like that. Thank you.
Yeah, if you'll give me some information on that, I appreciate it. I'll, uh, yeah, I'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, certification of election results. You have the election results in your packet.
Just to say that, uh, the candidates for Alderman Ward one and Ward three ran unopposed. They were the only ones who filed, and so those are bigger totals. Then, Alderman Ward two, those are write-in votes, and Mr. Dick Ward had the top vote. Write-in, fourteen votes, quite a bit more than anybody else that's on that list. So, he would, as, to my knowledge, he qualifies and would be eligible to, uh, serve as a Ward two alderman.
Okay.
Would you fire a motion?
Yes.
And would we certify the election results from April eighth, uh, as stated?
Second. Alright, I have a motion and second to certify the election results as stated on, uh, April eighth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Votes. Alright, let's certify.
I hope this board adjourns, sign and die?
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion and second that this, uh, board adjourns, sign and die. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Votes. Alright, thank you very much. At this, uh, point, I'd like to take a moment and, uh, make a couple of recognitions and appreciations. First, I'd like to, uh, thank Alderman Simmons for her time served on the, of the city council. She's been on the city council since, basically, two thousand eight. She has, uh, elect, normally, we, we give a plaque to those aldermen that have served the city and are leading the city, so, Alderman Simmons requested that she not receive a plaque, but her, the money for her plaque be donated to the Centralia, uh, Friends of the Battlefield for the reenactment, which is coming up in September. So, in appreciation for your, your service to the city from two thousand eight to two thousand fourteen, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
Good job, Catherine.
Yes, you will, yes, you will.
And you're welcome to, you're welcome to stay for real rest of the meeting if you like. Alderman Angel, you did, uh... Alderman Angel, uh, thank you for your service to the city. We couldn't have done it without you.
Oh, yeah, you could've.
No. So, presenting with appreciation, John Angel, for your service to the city of Centralia Missouri, Alderman, April two thousand ten to April two thousand fourteen.
Fair enough, fair.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
You both were a, uh... I'll, I'll tell you that both of you are, uh, an asset to the city.
You don't have to wrap stuff, you know, that's what I'm saying. That'd be great.
Alright. Thank you.
You see my truck happened, not, not, who says it, but I know.
Alright, I wish, wish you well in your business ventures.
Great.
Alright.
Easier said than done.
So.
Alright, thank you very much.
Organizational meeting.
Alright. Seven, five, eight.
Okay. Yeah, I'll call this, uh, organizational meeting of the Centralia Board of Aldermen, the new Board of Aldermen. Order. Call please, Catherine.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Magley.
Here.
Alderman Bulrah.
Here.
Alderman Warren.
Here.
Alderman Wilkins.
Alright. Welcome. Uh, we did have a forum tonight. First, uh, order of business is we'll swear in the new alderman.
Alright, now here's, if you have a question. Raise your right hand, raise your hand. I, Andrea Bulrah.
I, Andrea Bulrah.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
And I will faithfully, faithfully demean myself.
In the office of Alderman Ward one.
In the office of Alderman Ward one.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said cities to the best of my ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
Okay. Raise your right hand, please, and raise it after me. I, Dick Ward.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of Alderman Ward two.
In the office of Alderman Ward two.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said cities to the best of my ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
Raise your right hand, if you don't, please. I, Landon Magley.
I, Landon Magley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of Alderman Ward three.
In the office, office of Alderman Ward three.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
Welcome aboard. Election of President of the Board of Aldermen. This is the mayor pro temp. This election is done by the Board, uh, without any, any undue influence from myself or any other city officials.
Mr. Lee is the current, uh, Mayor Pro Temp.
Yes.
I know that, uh, the proper procedure would be to have a motion made by one of the aldermen to, uh, nominate someone for that position.
I would nominate Jim Lee for Mayor Pro Temp.
I have a motion and second to nominate Jim Lee for another term than all, Mayor Pro Temp. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Votes. Alright, do you accept the nomination? Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And then also, uh, the alderman elect the city clerk.
Yes.
Who is now Heather Lockett for a one-year term that must be done every year, so even though she's currently the city clerk, uh, it would be ordered for a, a motion to elect her for another one-year term.
I move, will you elect Heather Lockett for another year?
Alright. I have a motion and second to elect Heather Lockett as the city clerk for Centralia. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Votes. Alright, welcome aboard. Raise your right hand, repeat it. I, Heather Lockett.
I, Heather Lockett.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of city clerk.
In the office of city clerk.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. Alright. Need that nervous? Okay.
Will some move?
I have a motion that we adjourn the organizational meeting. Second, and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright, votes. Alright. Alright, regular meeting. Roll call please, Heather. I made it as a second, last two, the last two.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Magley.
Here.
Alderman Bulrah.
Here.
Alderman Warren.
Here.
Alderman Wilkins.
Alright. It's okay with the council and the four other plates, because we've already said that tonight. Consent agenda. You have the, uh, meeting minutes from the prior meetings, reports.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we move the, uh, uh...
Yes, we will. Thank you. So, with the, uh, Board's approval, I'd like to adjust the agenda for tonight and, uh, make a couple of appointments this evening. Okay with the Board? Okay. First appointment I would like to make is, uh, talked with the chief, and he spoke very highly of Michael Fowler. And I would like to appoint Michael Fowler to the office of part-time police officer for the City of Centralia.
I'm moving except for Mayor's, let me know, Michael Fowler.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to accept the Mayor's appointment of Michael Fowler to the position of part-time police officer. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Votes. Alright. Move for you.
Please raise your right hand, raise it after me. I, Michael Fowler.
I, Michael Fowler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And the ordinances, uh, of the City of Centralia.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of part-time police officer.
As, as part-time police officer.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. It's okay, take a moment. I'll let Michael tell you a little bit of time himself and, and you, and his fiancee here, would you take this moment?
Welcome to the center of the room, gentlemen.
Sure.
Thanks, sorry. Michael Fowler, I just graduated, actually, LETI. This is Mr. Stevens. See, that's, uh, I'm a Marine Reserve right now. I did four years active duty, two seven, twenty-nine qualms, if somebody familiar with that. But currently, I'm in the Marine Corps, but being a little bit actually, or looking to buy a house in Centralia, so you know any good places. I'm always up for an idea.
Alright.
But I'm glad you all, let me come here. I promise, I hope my status is very high in the Marine Corps, and I'll hold very high here too, sir.
Alright.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Alright, I have, uh, two more appointments real quick. Uh, Jan Hollis, the cemetery board. She's, uh, that will be a reappointment. Her term ends this year, and she's agreed to serve another three years on the, uh, cemetery board. This is Jan Hollis.
I'm moving except the Mayor's appointment of Jan Hollis to the, uh, sorry, cemetery?
Cemetery.
Yes.
I have a motion and second for you, except for the appointment of Jan Hollis to the cemetery board for another three-year term. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Votes. Alright, and it'd be the same thing for Vicki Simmons.
Do you have a motion to accept Vicki Simmons for a cemetery board?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept Vicki Simmons' appointment to the cemetery board for a three-year term. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Votes. Alright. Set three appointments. Moving back to number three on the agenda, the consent agenda. And for our new alderman, we can approve these as a unit, uh, or we can do them individually.
Well, we're looking for misrepresentations. We're looking for issues.
You mean it was, you know, misfully registered or like that?
I'm moving except the consent agenda as written.
Sorry.
Alright, I have a motion and second that we accept the consent agenda as written. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Votes. Alright. Council payable over twelve six.
Is that, uh, the last payment for the street or Switzerland? Is that the last one?
It's the last one. Uh, there's a couple of places where the grass might be a little more seedless. A little early to tell. We can take care of that without any issue.
No contract on the street, anybody knows?
Not that we know.
I just drove out the other day and it looked great on its own.
And I've double-checked all the measurements on the approaches and length, this may walk and correct it all over.
They got a year warranty on them, you know?
Um, I guess it'd be the contract, likely longer than that, but at least a year.
I can't watch them if you accept the consent agenda, about three hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-two cents?
It's actually the council payable.
Council payable, that's right.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second to accept the council payable over twelve hundred fifty dollars in the amount of three hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred point two dollars and eighty-two cents. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Votes. Alright. Okay. We'll open the floor for comments from citizens, if anyone wants to make a comment. There are none, close that. Economic development report by the Chamber of Commerce Director.
Is there anything? She sent, we all said she couldn't attend, and that's why I put our copies of the minutes of the last chamber meeting before your places to constitute her report. They have, um, elected new officers, and they will be having their annual banquet on Thursday night.
Okay.
Reminder.
Yep. Any questions about the chamber board, chamber meeting? Thank you, Lynn. Public hearings.
Unscheduled, sir.
Action agenda. Alright, we've got six items on here. Authorizing depository contract with Bill County National Bank. This is, orders requires two readings.
Part two.
Alright. Alderman Lee, would you introduce us a place?
Sure. Bill number?
Twenty-six ninety-three.
I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-three be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-three be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue please.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute the depository contract and pledge agreement with Boone County National Bank. I move that ordinance number twenty-six ninety-three be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-three be given its second reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute the depository contract and pledge agreement with Boone County National Bank. I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-three be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-three be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, roll call vote please Heather.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Bolraff.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Ward, Worman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty-six ninety-three passes and now becomes ordinance number...
Twenty-seven fifty-nine.
If you go ahead and put in the twenty-first day of April twice there at the bottom, please. Okay, if you have a paper, I should say.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, next. Authorizing cash management investment account agreement with Boone County National Bank. This also is an ordinance requires two readings. Alderman Worman, please.
The, see, I'll leave the...okay, excuse me, uh, pardon my...I just, we need to put in the twenty-first day of April there and give a paper copy.
Okay, bill number please.
Twenty-six ninety-four.
Okay, I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-four be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-four be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute a cash management investment account for agreement with Boone County National Bank. I move the bill number twenty-six ninety-four be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-four be given its second reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute a cash management investment account for agreement with Boone County National Bank. I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-four be adopted by roll call vote, second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-four be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, roll call vote please Heather.
Alderman Bolraff.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Worman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty-six ninety-four passes and now becomes ordinance number...
Twenty-seven sixty.
Alright. Authorizing safekeeping agreement with Central Trust Bank. Again, this is an ordinance requires two readings.
One of the, one of the reasons this is here is because we needed to plug in the name of the mayor pro tempore, who we do not know what was going to be, who it was going to be until the election. Uh, for those of you that have paper copies, that would mean on the fifth line you should write in James Lee and then put in twenty-first day of April at the bottom in two places.
Alderman Wilkins, would you introduce this one please?
I have a bill number please.
Twenty-six ninety-five.
I move that bill number two-six nine-five be given its first read by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-five be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue please.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute a safekeeping agreement with the Central Trust Bank. And authorizing the mayor, mayor pro tempore and either the city clerk or the deputy city clerk of the city of Centralia Missouri to establish, open and maintain one or more safekeeping accounts for the city of Centralia Missouri, A.B. Chan's Memorial Fund and Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. With the Central Trust Bank, a Missouri trust company located in Jefferson City to purchase government securities. I move, I move that bill number two-six nine-five be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-five be given its second reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue please.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute a safekeeping agreement with the Central Trust Bank and authorizing the mayor, mayor pro tempore and either the city clerk or the deputy city clerk of the city of Centralia Missouri to establish, open and maintain one or more safekeeping accounts for the city of Centralia Missouri, A.B. Chan's Memorial Fund and Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. With the Central Trust Bank, a Missouri trust company located in Jefferson City to purchase government securities. I move that bill number two-six nine-five be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-five be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, roll call vote please Heather.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Worman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Bolraff.
Yes.
Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty-six ninety-five passes and now becomes ordinance number...
Twenty-seven sixty-one.
Alright. Authorizing accounts with fixed income investments located at Central Bank in Jefferson City for purchase of government securities. This is a resolution that requires one reading.
Again, on this one, if you'll plug in James Lee, uh, second, third line, for those of you that have paper copies and put in the twenty-first day of April at the bottom.
Okay, Alderman Bolraff, would you introduce this one please?
Bill number? Twenty-six ninety-six. Uh, I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-six be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-six be given its first and only reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor, mayor pro tempore and either the city clerk of the city of Centralia Missouri to establish, open and maintain one or more accounts for the city of Centralia Missouri, A.B. Chan Memorial Fund and Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. With fixed income investments located at Central Bank in Jefferson City to purchase government securities. Move that bill number two-six ninety-six be given its second reading by title only.
Be adopted by roll call vote.
Resolution.
Re- resolution.
Resolution.
Yeah, that's okay. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-six be given and be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, roll call vote please Heather.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Worman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Bolraff.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty-six ninety-six passes and now becomes resolution number...
R dash fourteen dash zero four.
Moving right along. Authorize, authorizing certain Centralia officials to sign checks and other documents on account with Boone County National Bank. Again, this is a resolution requires one reading.
And there are two places to put in the name of the mayor pro tempore, James Lee, and put in the twenty-first day of April at the bottom, please.
Alright. Alderman Ward, would you introduce this one please?
Bill number?
Twenty-six ninety-seven.
I move the bill number twenty-six ninety-five be given its first reading by title only.
Twenty-six ninety-seven?
Ninety-seven. Ninety-seven?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-seven be given its first and only reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue please.
Move the bill number twenty-six ninety-seven be given its second reading by title only.
Close. Gotta read the, read the bill.
Oh.
Just, just the title.
Okay.
A bill to create...
A bill to create a resolution entitled, a resolution authorizing the mayor, mayor pro tempore and the city clerk of the city of Centralia Missouri to sign checks on the bank account of the city of Centralia at Boone County National Bank in the city of Centralia and other instruments in behalf of the city. Move, move that the bill be adopted by roll call vote. Be adopted by roll call vote, second.
Alright, I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-seven be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, roll call vote please Heather.
Alderman Worman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Bolraff.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty-six ninety-seven passes and now becomes resolution number R dash fourteen dash zero five. And finally, authorizing electronic business services agreement with Boone County National Bank. Again, this is ordinance requires two readings. Would you introduce this one, Alderman?
Bill number?
Twenty-six ninety-eight.
Move that bill number twenty-six ninety-eight be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-eight be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ord, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute an agreement with Environmental Management Solutions.
Close.
It's the other one.
The other one? Where are we at here? Alright, let's try this again.
Okay.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city clerk... The city clerk of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute an electronic business service agreement with Boone County National Bank. I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-eight be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-eight be given its second reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the, of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute an electronic business service agreement with Boone County National Bank. I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-eight be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-eight be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, roll call vote please Heather.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Bolraff.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins. Alderman Worman.
Yes.
Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty-six ninety-eight passes and now becomes ordinance number...
Twenty-seven sixty-two.
Please put twenty-first day of April at the bottom in two places.
Okay. Alright. The, next is the delinquent tax report.
Every year, um, we request the reported delinquent taxes from the Boone County Collector's Office and they do send us that report. Um, it includes taxes for our general fund, which includes the parks and rec fund, as well as the library, um, which includes the library fund. So, if you have any questions, those are all of the unpaid personal property and real estate taxes, um, through March thirty-first, two thousand fourteen.
Being in order, coming up inappropriate to, uh, a motion to accept, uh, the delinquent tax report.
Uh, so move.
Second. Alright, I have a motion to second to accept the delinquent tax report as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Report on county tax abatements.
Um, in addition to the tax report, they also request to report for all of the taxes to be abated. These are for two thousand eight personal property taxes that are considered uncollectible, um, that's listed in your packet. The grand total, um, for taxes uncollectibles, fifty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents a share. Not, not a large amount.
Okay. So, a motion would be in order for that as well?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion to second to accept the report on county tax abatements as reported, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Alright, utility bills based debts charged off as of March thirty-first, two thousand fourteen.
And again, these are utility bills, um, that people have just left owing the city. We've applied any deposits that we would have on file to that bill and these are the balances due. Bills is very diligent to try to collect these, especially people moving town. We try to make sure that we do follow up to get any unpaid balances paid. Um, however, um, maybe five hundred, eight thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and forty-nine cents is uncollectible and that runs from January of two thousand thirteen through December of two thousand thirteen.
Again, a motion would be over if you...
So move.
Second.
I have a motion to second to accept the utility bills based debts charged off as reported, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Alright. And approving, yes.
Make the point that we are not forgiving these. If they come in and we have any leverage at all, we go back ten, fifteen, twenty years if we do, and we still try and collect this.
So we have a long...
But this gives the auditor something to kind of underline and...
Right, okay.
Close it out.
Alright, any questions on that? Okay, uh, next is approving budgeted inter-fund transfers.
We have budgeted for a transfer from water fund to the general fund of thirty thousand dollars. From electric fund to the general fund of sixty thousand dollars. And from the electric fund to the cemetery fund, I think it was thirty-five. Okay, but, you should go put it in the resolution, we'll have to go look it up.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize, no, there's not a...
There's not a resolution in here for...
Well, it just takes a motion.
Oh, okay.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars from the electric to the cemetery fund. The other two months I gave you are correct.
Okay.
I make a motion, I mean, make the transfers as discussed.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve the transfers as projected then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Alright, permits and license, none scheduled, is that still the case?
Still the case, sir.
Legal, same thing?
Still the case, sir.
Purchasing. Contract with environmental management solutions LLC for engineering services related to renewal of a owner-supervised claim for city water distribution system. This is an ordinance for required reading.
Uh, there's possibly one typo, I, I thought it was corrected, but it may not be in the, in the, in the packet you have. But the ordinance on the first line, it should, should say, and the mayor of the city of Centralia is hereby authorized. If that is in there, then it's, uh, the one I had, it said R still. So, it should say is, I.S. instead of R, A.R.E.
Okay. Let's start background, Alderman Lee, would you introduce this one please?
Sure.
Twenty-six ninety-nine.
I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-nine be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-nine be given its first reading by title only, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute... A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centaria Reserve to execute an agreement with Environmental Management Solutions LLC of Boone County, Missouri, to provide engineering services related to renewal of an owner-supervised plan for the Centaria Water Distribution Center. I move that, uh, Bill number twenty-six ninety-nine be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second that Bill number twenty-six ninety-nine be given its second reading by title only, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centaria, Missouri, to execute an agreement with Environmental Management Solutions LLC of Boone County, Missouri, to provide engineering services related to the renewal of an owner-supervised plan in the Centaria Water Distribution Center. I move that Bill number twenty-six ninety-nine be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
I have a motion to second that Bill number twenty-six ninety-nine be adopted by a roll call vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Volrath.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Gorman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, Bill number twenty-six ninety-nine passes, now becomes ordinance number.
Twenty-seven sixty-three.
Right. Old business. Anybody have any old business? New business? So, Alderman have any new business? Lynn?
Two things. First of all, some of the Aldermen are not on planning a zoning, which has, and considering revisions to the subdivision regulations, this is not yet in the form of an ordinance, but the plan is to advertise for all the hearings at the May board meeting, and assuming there are no subsequent changes that arise out of those hearings, to have an ordinance that will adopt these new revised subdivision regulations at that time. Secondly, um, if the two new Aldermen will stay after the meeting, Heather and I can, um, work out how you're going to have electronic access to the packet.
All right, Merrick?
Well, maybe related to, to that last point that Lynn made, uh, I'm not sure whether Alderman Volrath and Alderman Ward have, uh, decided upon the, uh, email address that you want to publicize to the public, uh, which will be put on the city website, and for anybody who wants to contact you by email. Do you, do you have, do you have those ready?
I can hear.
Okay, what, what is that?
Uh, andyvolrath@gmail.com, A N D I E.
A N D I E at?
Volrath, V O L L R A T H, at gmail dot com.
Andy Volrath at gmail dot com. I know I'm catching you cold about this, do you, do you have, do you have access to email? Do you, okay, and do you, uh, do you have an email address?
Yes, nicklward@gmail dot com.
Okay, is it L, is that a small L or?
Small L, they're all small.
Okay, nicklward@gmail dot com. Okay, well, that, that's something that Heather will need to know, it'll be put on the website, uh, and anybody can contact you at the, they'll also be aware that that can happen. Uh, the other thing is, uh, this is not something that has to be done tonight, it can be done tonight, uh, by motion, but uh, there is a body called the Dog Hearing Board, it has not met for some time, but it says that there are three Aldermen, I mean, the mayor and two Aldermen, excuse me, three members, mayor and two Aldermen who are on the, on the Dog Hearing Board, and it's basically, uh, an appeals board to a decision made by the code enforcement officer Sandra Buck regarding dogs running at large and, and that kind of thing. The, the, she makes a determination, gives that, them a notice of this, and they may appeal it if they want to do that, uh, they have some reason. And Catherine Wilkins, Catherine, excuse Simmons, Catherine Simmons was one, uh, an Alderman, was one of the, uh, persons on the Dog Hearing Board, there's a vacancy now. David Wilkins is the, and Mayor Greinke are the other two on there. So, it would be in order now or in another meeting, uh, to, for the, uh, this is, this is selected by the board of Aldermen, the, the mayor is no part in it, just like the other things that we were talking about tonight. So, I'm just, uh, advising you about this, that you can be thinking about it, if you have made a decision, and somebody, it, it meets just a, a call, and as I said, it hasn't met for some time because it, there's not been a reason to, but. Yes. The, the other, uh, the, the other matter for the, uh, the mayor to determine, this is something that there's not even a, a motion to approve it, is, is the chairman of public utilities, public works, and the.
Chairman of public.
Okay, all right.